Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Moving on to Agenda Item D. All board members received in their Friday packet the minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting that took place on March 23rd, 2015. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Education approve of the minutes from the March 23rd, 2015 Board of Education regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Vic. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Moving on to report from Student Council Representative, Emma Karpinski.
Thank you. At John Trumbull, teachers are using Columbia University units of study to teach writing after participating in a five-day professional development workshop. Kindergarten students are almost ready for first grade after covering topics in language, arts, reading, and math. At Judson School, classes have had the opportunity to practice smarter balanced test items to prepare for the test. Third graders visited the Warner Theater and saw the production of Charlotte's Web. At Polk School, fifth-grade student debates were held before April break. Parents were invited and served as judges. Detective Mark Conway held a cyber safety program for fourth and fifth-grade students. A parent addition will take place April 15th. At Swift Middle School, a district-wide coffeehouse musical performance was held in late March and sold out at Swift. Faculty members and students from Swift and the high school performed. The admission costs will be used for the Watertown Music Boosters Association scholarship. The Safe School Climate Committee met to discuss new district policies regarding visitors and survey results. At the high school, the spring art show just had its opening reception at the Watertown Library. The art will be on display until Saturday, the 18th. The show was put together by Lindsay Lawton and myself. The musical leader of the pack was sold out two of the three show nights, and all course requests for the 2015 and 16 school year were entered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Karpinski. Moving forward to Item F, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report.
Good evening. I hope we all enjoyed the recess. I know that the young folks stood in front of me until they came back today, I'm sure. Two weeks ago, since we've been off a week, I spent a full day at John Trumbull. I visited all of pre-K and kindergarten and several other classes, particularly all of the second-grade classrooms, where I got to see them doing their letters to our seniors at the Senior Center. There's a pen pal program going between the second graders and the senior citizens that's going very well. The kids were very excited to show me their pen pal letters. And fast forward to this past week while we were on recess, I had my monthly coffee with Dr. C. at the Senior Center, and a number of seniors showed up to visit, ask questions, ask questions about schools, the budget, so on. We had a nice conversation, and I was able to let them know that the second graders were so excited to share their letters, and I showed them the pictures that the second graders took of them with their letters, and the descriptions of the seniors that I had given back to the second graders, because they were very cute and wanting to know if I knew their senior, and they were describing, giving me their names and asking me to describe who they were, and if I knew what classes they took at the Senior Center.[242.12][242.12](Laughter). Also, two weeks ago, I spent a day at Swift. I visited some classes. I didn't go through the entire building the way I often will, because my time was there that day. Also, two weeks ago, of course, we had the public budget hearing on March 19th. That went well, and I think it's not news to anyone at this point that the Board of Education budget was approved by the town council at that meeting and will now be put forward to referendum at the same time as the town budget, and the referendum will be on May 12th. Also, last week, besides going to the Senior Center, I attended the Rotary Club meeting on Wednesday. That was a good use of my time with school being out of session. We discussed a number of fundraisers that the Rotary Club is involved with that benefit the schools. In particular, there is a dance coming up at the Rotary Club that they are looking to raise money to build a playground for students with special needs in Watertown, so I was there to help a little bit with that. Moving on. I actually should stop for a moment and say, right before I came here tonight, I visited the art show at the Watertown Public Library, and I have to tell you, Emma, that is some of the best artwork that I have seen. Our students are so talented. If you actually stop in to see this art show, you'll be surprised that it's not professional artists and that it's completely done by students at our high school. It opened tonight. They set it up. It's mostly on the main level. There are a few just, a few steps up on the second floor, and it will be there for how long, Emma?
Until Saturday, the 18th.
So, if you have the opportunity, I really would advise you to stop in and take a look. They did a fantastic job. I was so proud of you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to the calendar, I have, I just want to point out a couple of things, because this evening I'll be asking the Board of Education to approve the updated calendar. I know we all know this, but I want to make sure that we are officially on the record that the last day of school in Watertown is June 19th, so that is really the only change that you are approving on this calendar. And also, while we're there, I'll just fast forward also to the graduation dates. We are looking at Thursday, June 18th, as the date for graduation exercises at Swift Middle School, and Friday, June 19th, as the date of graduation exercises for Watertown High School. That will work very well for us at the high school in particular, because the seniors will then have their project graduation that night, and it's a much easier activity for us to carry out when it happens on a Friday night, so I'm very happy that we were able to get that in with no more snow days. I also very pleased to get an email late last night from our robotics team advisor here at the schools, Mrs. Barris, who I don't think is here with us this evening, but our robotics team has done a fantastic job in competition. They were just going again this past weekend, and they are now moving on for the first time to the Nationals. They are very excited, so congratulations to the Watertown High School robotics team. Lastly, just want to discuss a bit that I will turn it over to Mrs. Brown to go through some of the items. On Friday, board members, you received in the packet a list of line item transfers that in the upcoming board meeting, so at the April 27th meeting, we will be looking to discuss again and have a possible action on. As you all know, the new policies that were adopted last March, one of the policies requires that we bring line item transfers to the Board of Education for approval, except when they need to be done in emergency situations and we can't meet in a timely fashion, in which case I have the authority to make them. I would like to be safe, as this is the first time that we are doing it, and I would like to bring all of the line item transfers to the board. I've not had to do any of them at this point as an emergency, but it is the time of year that we should do them, because we have just completed the third quarter of our fiscal year, and we are about to start the final quarter of our fiscal year, so I'd like to move forward ensuring that we have balanced the books as we approach the end of the year. And also, we received an installment for our excess cost grant, and I need to allocate that money appropriately into the line items that that grant designates it for, so that is also a portion of the transfers that we are looking to make. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Brown, if you would like to explain, I think, a few of the transfer items and to see if board members have questions.
Sure. Thank you. In the memorandum that we sent in Friday's packet, you'll see that there's a list of item transfers, and the first, they're set up by a bulleted list. The first are the expenditure reductions that you'll see due to the excess cost funding. That will be put toward professional services, pupil transportation, and tuition, which are the three areas where special education overages throughout the year that will reduce our expenditures in those areas. Little over $111,000 to professional services, $300,000 to transportation, outplacement tuition. We would like to, from the certified salaries line, take a total of $300,000, where we've kept it under budget all year long, and we'd like to put $30,000 to tutoring salaries, where we're running a little bit over for the year. That will balance that out. $140,000 to substitute salaries. And then, we'd like to take some and give back to instructional supplies. If you recall, when we started the year back in July, we had, in order to make the cuts that were requested at that time from town council, we had taken a little bit off of supplies across the board, and so we'd like to put some of that back, and then also toward custodial supplies. From non-certified staff, the $6,000 request that you see there is for the new contract, that's the boot stipend that was approved, and we will be paying out the third, one, two, three, fourth bullet down from construction projects. That's the 450 line that we've been talking about throughout the year. There's $65,000 in that line. All of that will go toward the contracted. Some of that is for vehicle repairs, and that's put separately. The 7347 is specifically for vehicle repairs. And then, the rest of it is just some small item, line item transfers within each school from line to line. Polk was transferring from library supplies to library books. At Swift, music to system-wide music, that's only 176. Within the high school, 50853 from guidance testing to supplies. The high school word language from textbooks to language dues and fees. And the high school, again, the peer advocate program to SSP. And then, lastly, within the high school art program, from sculpture, sorry, from art to sculpture, amount is 524. So, just some smaller school items there, but for the most part, it's the allocation, the proper allocation of the excess cost grant.
Jill, I have a couple of questions for you, and then I'll open it up to the board members. The expenditure reductions due to the excess cost sharing grant, does the grant total $811,331?
Yes. At this time, we do expect a smaller installment, because usually you get two installments with the excess cost grant, one in February and one in May. The bulk of it always comes in February, so so far we have $811,331,000. I do expect a smaller installment, and hopefully we'll know that amount at our next meeting.
The transfers from certified salaries on supplies, I'm assuming we also had a freeze this year at certain times?
Yes. We asked for a hard, well, for a freeze in November and for a hard freeze just after the holidays.
Board members have questions for Ms. Brown at this time? Mr. Lambert?
Yes, Ms. Brown. The $300,000 pupil transportation line item, object 510. Was that from historic information from last year that we have to raise this in order to put an infusion into that line item, or how did that, what was the major reason?
Well, I think typically, there's always a percentage of the excess cost that goes toward pupil transportation, and that's something that's difficult to forecast right at the beginning of the year if you've had other outplacements, or if you've had, depending on where the outplacements are. And of course, every time you go across the city line, there's an extra charge for that, so I can look that up for you.
But changes from year to year?
Absolutely.
I mean, without a lot of prior knowledge, but historically, will we build that into next year's budget a little differently, knowing what we have from year to year as it starts building?
I know that we've, at all of our meetings, and meeting with Mrs. Rochester and putting together this year's budget, we've looked at what our actual expenditures were for the past three-to-five-year history, so we definitely tried to stay more on target with what our expenditures are and forecast what there will be. But, again, typically, because we know that some of that excess cost is going to go toward that transportation line, we definitely will run over and then mend it with the excess cost grant. But I'll look up for you historically how much that has been.
Thank you.
Just to add in there, that that is only specifically related to students with special needs that we are transporting, that we are getting some portion of that reimbursed, because, again, we are over the excess cost threshold, so as Mrs. Brown said, sometimes it's difficult to know what that a year will look like. So luckily, at least, some of it comes back. But as we built the budget for next year, these, we took into consideration the numbers that we have historically gotten back, and also the current students that we know will meet the threshold. And the way that it works is you have a couple of times a year when you can add in students that you think may go over the threshold, is the way the grant works, and so you have to add in the student's name. It's actually their ID number is the way to give it to the state. You give the state the student's ID number, and you let them, you provide the documentation that you have gone over the threshold by X amount of dollars and in what areas, in transportation and tuition payments, in services, and they reimburse whichever, whatever portion of it they are reimbursing that year, and honestly, it varies between, sometimes as low as 60%, sometimes as high as 80%. We haven't seen 80% of the dollar amount you're going over the cost. So this is them reimbursing us just a portion of what we have gone, this $300,000 in transportation alone is just a portion of what we have gone over our normal per pupil expenditure, which means we're over around $60,000 for an individual student.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but before we even qualify for the excess cost grant, we have to spend four times the amount of our per pupil expenditure before they'll even cover.
Yep, four and a half times our per expenditure, yep.
Board members have any other questions for Mrs. Brown? Mr. Vicenze?
Can you tell me why, or tell us why salaries have increased?
I can answer, I can answer that. Primarily, that has been a number of concussions and the treatments for concussions changing. They're diagnosed more often, more readily, and typically, the course of action when a student is diagnosed, depending on the severity of the concussion, is time at home, no lights, no computer usage, and so on, and we are providing a number more than we've seen in, I would probably say, ever, not just in recent years, for those services. Some of the others, unfortunately, we've had some more students than usual that have been ill with serious illnesses that kept them out of school at a couple different other schools, so some of that is none, we couldn't have really accounted for that. So luckily, again, knowing early on that we started to see that trend, that's where we froze some of these other lines so that we would be able to balance the budget.
Any further questions? Mrs. Rinaldi?
For the transportation, the purchase of our vehicles too, that will, that will change the overage too, as well, for the transportation next year?
It may or it may not, because we are using the vehicles primarily to drive the students where, those were students we counted on already, driving to Oliver Woolcott, for example, in Torrington, to Bristol Tech, and to some of our, to some of our local transition placements for students with special needs in the 18 to 21 category, where we drive them to places of work and so on in the community. So typically, the number that you're looking at here is driving a student to a different facility for their primary education.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Continue. I'm sorry, but just as a reminder to board members, before the close of the meeting this evening, if you do have any other questions that have occurred to you as we continue through the meeting, we have something for board member comp, because we would like to move on this as an action item at our next board meeting. Thank you.
Couple of important dates that I just looked up, so I would make sure I would save them here tonight. This Wednesday is my day at the high school. I'll be here majority of the day. I then have office hours for parents or community members at the Oakville Public Library at 2:30 this Wednesday. Next week, on Tuesday, April 21st, I'll be with you at Judson all day, and on Thursday, April 23rd, I'll be at Polk all day. Now, really finally, before I can do the fun part of the meeting with young people, our Wall of Honor, this is when we look for nominations, or the Watertown High School Wall of Honor. The purpose of the wall is to recognize individuals that have brought distinction to Watertown High School and the community through their commitment to excellence. To be nominated to the Wall of Honor, a candidate must have graduated from Watertown High School at least 10 years prior to the year of induction, and consistently demonstrated the highest standards of excellence and honor in his or her chosen vocation. Award recipients will be chosen from the field of athletics, business, finance, fine or performing arts, education, health medical services, government or public service, and science or technology. Nomination forms can be found on our district's website at watertownps.org. The completed nomination forms must be received in the district offices no later than May 21st, 2015, and the same will be placed in the newspaper after this evening's board meeting. Thank you.
Board members have questions for Dr. Cardamola? So now, to our favorite part of any board meetings that we have, award recognition. The Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate the following Judson Elementary School students who were recognized for the Student of the Month for January, February, and March, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Cardamola.
Some of you I know have been here before, but some of you have not, so I make it easy on you, and you know what to do. When I call your name, come up here, and you can shake my hand, and Mrs. Craddy, the Board of Education Chair, will give you your certificate. Then you can go back and sit down, and we will take a short break after we hand out all the certificates, so that your parents can all get the photos that they'd like to take. So, because I know that's, that's a primary concern of getting dressed up and coming here tonight. So, listen for your name and come here first, okay? So in, for January, in grade three, we have Owen Brown. And Lucy Kite. In grade four for January, Abigail Stinson. And Tyler Palmer. In grade five for January, Sam Summerfield. And Olivia Dunn. For February, grade three, Juan Rentes. And also Julianne Noid. In grade four, Mason Smutney. And Daniella Mancini. In grade five, Ilma Syrokovik. And Peyton DeFeo. For March in grade three, Joseph Lusalaki. And Ella Kajak. In grade four, Jaden Carter. And Eliana Groban. And finally, in grade five, Avery O'Connell.
So if we could ask all of our Judson students to come up here, we'll start with the second graders, I'm sorry, third graders, if they can come up front, and we'll take your picture with Dr. Cardamola. with Dr. Cartamola. Nice to see we still have some participants here this evening. Thank you to each and every one of you who are here this evening. Mr. Lambert and I were just commenting that most of the students that we end up seeing at this grade level are the same students who we end up seeing during award recognition at the high school. And for the student that's left, I want you to know that we're very proud of you, and we look forward to honoring you many more times. Great job. You're welcome. See what happens when you stay?
You go up for your public participation if you're so inclined.
Speaking of which, moving on to item H, public participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Again, are there any members of the public who wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to I, committee reports, curriculum and instruction, Mr. Ray Nardella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report tonight for curriculum and instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. As acting chair, I'll tell you that Policy and Labor Committee has no report this evening. Moving on to Mr. Lambert, Chair of Budget and Finance Committee.
No report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, and moving back to you again for Facilities, PBC, and Operations Committee.
No report at this time for that.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Back to you, Mr. Nardella, Governance and Community Engagement.
No report tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Item J, Communications. Mr. Nardella, do we have any communications to share with the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of Education has received a piece of communication from the Falls Avenue Senior Center, and just to provide some context, Madam Chair, some members of the Board of Education have generously elected to chip in for tickets for senior citizens to the Watertown High School play a few weeks ago. So, the following was received to the board. Dear Board of Education Members, the seniors love Leader of the Pack. Many thanks for chipping in to purchase their tickets. They all had a great night out, thanks to your generosity. We appreciate your kindness and support. Sincerely, Catherine and the Falls Avenue Senior Center.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Appreciate you sharing that. I do know that 28 tickets were donated by individual board members, so that senior citizens could come to the event, and the senior center also provided transportation for them, so it was a nice collaborative event, and I know that they enjoy coming to those, and we hope to continue that in the future. Okay, I have a few things I do want to share tonight. First, I'd like to bring your attention to our Student Council Representative, Karpinski. It struck me this evening, as Dr. Cartamola was talking about the art show at the public library that Emma and another student helped orchestrate, that Emma Karpinski is our Student Council Representative for a reason. Throughout this school year, you have continued to be so active in your involvement in the school, in, both academically and in the arts, and in so many other ways that I'm sure we're not even aware of. And you're also our representative here on the board, which is, for us, extremely relevant and important to us. Having had a student participate in the musical, I know how much work is involved in that, and to have somebody who doesn't just shut down after Tech Week performances, and sort of roll up in a ball in their own room for a little while, and just keep moving forward, and doing things for the community, like providing an art show in conjunction with the public library, so that your fellow students can have their artwork shown, and the community can enjoy that, is a testament to the type of student and person you are, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, so I could be more involved in the town, too, be able to come here to each meeting.
We look forward to hearing more about you as you graduate soon, and just confirms once again why you are here with us. So, thank you, Emma. Our former Chair Guy Bizzano is receiving an award on May 5th. The Gold Circle of Sports will hold its 38th Annual Gold Circle of Sports Awards Dinner, and they have chosen Mr. Bizzano as the 2015 recipient of the prestigious Phil Bretonic Award. His family is deeply honored by this, and will be present to speak and accept in Mr. Bizzano's honor. I encourage all board members and public to join us in attending this special event to honor our former chair, to be there for Beth, Alex, and Jill, and to support the Gold Circle of Sports and all that they will also honor that evening. On a side note, I have, it has been shared with me, and I will make it public as others have, that most of us are aware how important the ring is for those recipients of the Gold Circle of Sports who receive the ring, as a testament to their athletic contributions in Watertown. I have been told that all of the recipients of the rings this year are refusing the ring, and would prefer that the money that was spent on the ring be donated to the Guy Bizzano Memorial Scholarship Committee. So he continues to be honored, we continue to be reminded of all the great work that he's done, and how he has touched so many different communities, even the athletic community. So I hope that some of you will be able to join us as we honor him with, at the Gold Circle of Sports Awards Dinner the first week in May. Lastly, I'd like to touch upon the budget. At the public hearing that Dr. Cartamola referred to in her report, the town council overwhelmingly supported the board-approved budget, both in their unanimous vote of approval and in their many voices of support. We heard from town council members statements that I have not heard since I've moved to this town in support of our school budget and the work that Dr. Cartamola and her administration and team did. We witnessed over 25 people take advantage of their right as residents to voice their opinion, including Mrs. Davidson, our Recording Secretary, and some of her children, so we thank you for that. Every single one of those people who spoke about the budget, the school budget, spoke about it in favor of it, and they should. This district has worked very hard, not just this year, but each and every year, under huge amounts of pressure, when federal and state funding is not at the required level. We have to shift our own spending priorities, year after year, to cover mandated programs. In many cases over the years, we've had to shut down or significantly decrease programs considered important by our community. Superintendents all over the state are feeling the same kind of pressure, the pressure of the double impact of accountability and tight finances, and the mandates require more and more, and Watertown receives less and less. We can't just take money in the budget from areas not directly affected by accountability and testing and rearrange our day. This takes hard work, and if this scenario isn't tough enough to keep good people working for Watertown and its public schools, getting the public's approval is also getting much tougher. We, collectively, our district, have really done a remarkable job containing each and every single one of our costs, making the system even more efficient than in the past. And if you remember, in the past, we were ranked as one of the most efficient school districts in the state, and now we're even doing more. There are some school districts that are forced to try and outsource food service, transportation, and other employee jobs to save money, while we have found ways to do these things without outsourcing, and we are saving money by doing it. Talk about turning things upside down. We are in the business of educating students, not laying off employees, approximately 80% of which are Watertown or Oakville residents. You can't say this budget isn't low enough, because there is a 2.99% increase. We're not afraid to be accountable for our spending, and for those who have read the entire budget and the presentation know that this is true. We know that without the sped increases, we'd be at a 0.0058% increase. And we're still finding a way to make the educational opportunities between Polk students and Judson students equal. We're still finding a way to bring in a much-needed social worker to provide the responsible level of support for our Water Oak students. We're still helping to bring us into the two, the budget is still helping to bring us into 2015, with technology, oversight, data, input, and management. We've gone after and been awarded grants in every possible area where we qualify, except where we can't provide the competent data that is required. Folks, we are painstakingly documenting costs at all levels, and making sure that every administrator can see how much they are spending at each school, in comparing and assessing how much we are spending per pupil, and looking at the differences in spending, and determining how it can affect student performance. Dr. Cartamola applied top budget strategies that top thinkers in the education field recommend, but she put her own spin on it, and her own intellect. She started her budgeting at the school level and worked her way up as a way to develop a budget that is comprehensive and easily understood. We'll do our part to continue with the same budget strategy every day of every year, and, thanks to some great partnerships with people like State Representative Eric Barthel and Senator Rob Kane, we will concentrate on working with state legislators, so they know how tight finances are in Watertown and Oakville, and we're going to push to see what they can do to provide more funding for Watertown, its senior citizens, and its public schools. We don't really have much choice at this point. We need to get voters to the polls on May 12th. Cutting this budget doesn't mean we're going to, if we have to cut the budget, it doesn't mean we're going to go back to old ways of robbing Peter to pay Paul, until Peter gets laid off or drops out of school, and Paul barely gets by. That's not what we're going to do. We refuse to let the quality of this town go down because of decisions made by the state, and we will continue to educate responsibly and efficiently, but we need your support in this process. Please assist us in getting people out to vote at the referendum. Get really fired up when I talk about... Smoothly transition.
That's without coffee, right, Liz?
I'll smoothly transition to item L, action items, adoption of items to be approved by consent. Item one, consideration of the approval to revise the 2014-2015 school year calendar. The revised 2014-15 school year calendar is presented tonight for the full board approval to prove the last day of school as June 19th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of the revised school year calendar as presented, to approve the last day of school as June 19th, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item two, consideration of the approval of high school and middle school graduation date. There have been six school closings during the school year due to inclement weather. Therefore, the last day of school, as Dr. Cartamola explained, is Friday, June 19th. It's recommended that we vote to approve June 18th as the date for graduation for Swift Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of Thursday, June 18th, 2015, as a date for graduation exercises for Swift Middle School.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to B, it's recommended that the board vote to approve Friday, June 19th, as the date for graduation exercises for Watertown High School's class of 2015. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of Friday, June 19th, 2015, as a date for graduation exercises for Watertown High School, class of 2015.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to action item three, consideration of the approval of an out-of-state field trip to St. Louis, Missouri. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approves the Watertown High School Robotics Team field trip to St. Louis, Missouri, from April 21st, 2015, through April 26th, 2015, for the purpose of competing in a robotics competition for 19 Watertown High School students and six chaplains.
Thank you, Mr. Presensi. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Before we move on to the next action item, which is in regard to approving a field trip that has already taken place from April 2nd to April 8th, I would like to offer a brief explanation as to why we're doing this now. The robotics team made it to a certain level in championship while we were on vacation in between board meetings, and I made the decision with an electronic board approval, unanimous approval, to approve their request for field trip. By doing that, we were in violation of FOI, because any time we have a discussion, whether it's in person or electronically, it is considered a meeting by the FOIA. So in order to rectify that, we'd like to go ahead and acknowledge that we did do a vote electronically in an emergency basis, and at this point, I would ask for a consideration to adopt the prior authorization. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approves of adopting its previous authorization that took place via email on April 2nd, 2015, to approve the out-of-state field trip to Worcester, Massachusetts, from April 8th, 2015, to April 11th, 2015, for 19 Watertown High School students from the Robotics Team 237.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
I second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Moving on to item six, consideration of the approval of acceptance of a gift. I'm sorry, consideration of the approval to use John Tremble Primary School and Judson Elementary School for religious education classes. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of St. John the Evangelist Office of Religious Education to use John Tremble Primary School and Judson Elementary School for religious education classes during the 2015-2016 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gambardella. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item six, consideration of the approval of the acceptance of a gift. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the board accept a donation from the Watertown Lions Club in the amount of $1,270 to support eighth-grade students in a need of assistance to attend the yearly educational trip to Washington, DC. It is recommended that a letter of thanks be sent to the Lions Club for their generous donation.
Thank you, Josephine. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Don. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to agenda item M, future agenda items and board member comments. The board members have any comments they wish to make at this time?
I'd like to make a quick comment. I just wanted to let everybody know how much I enjoyed the last musical, Leader of the Pack, and the past musicals, too, such as Leap of Faith and Bitwood on the Roof, and I could still, you know, have these recollections or memories of certain performances. I thought they were just so wonderful, and I think all of the staff, I'm sure, is really proud of the students. It's evident from sitting in the theater that these kids are very talented, very, very intelligent, and very good people, and I can really see that kind of radiating from their faces, and I think everybody, we are really very, very lucky to have such beautiful children in our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Gambardella. I agree 100% with you. Any other board members have any comments or suggestions this evening?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if we could be minutes from the previous meeting? Seems like a lot of work, a lot of paper. Is there some way we could see this online, so that each one of us didn't get this, or is it state mandated that these have to be here in our packet?
I will get back to you with the current regulations. I do have them written in here, but we have chosen the written format for a variety of reasons, and I will be happy to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Presensi. Any other questions, suggestions, or comments? Okay, moving on to N, public participation. Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Sam? Okay, seeing none?
Thinking about it.
Seeing none, we'll move to item O. I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned.